Okay, we're recording. It's at six.
Yeah, the other thing too. I'm not gonna stand until 12:00 o'clock and I, you know, that's not gonna happen. You understand?
You mean 12:00 o'clock then?
Yeah, so I, I, I turn into a pumpkin at 8:30 matz.
Okay, it's six. We'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, August 23rd, due order at 6:00. Roll call. We have Brett Witham, Beth Gott, myself, Mark Good. And Lawson has contacted us and said he wouldn't be able to make it tonight. He's a new dad, so congratulations to him. And Jeff, we know, has recused from this proceeding, so I'll take a motion to excuse both of them.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second on the table to excuse Lawson, Wilson, and Jeff Young. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye? Aye? Unanimous, okay. Minutes. I did see one thing in the minutes. If you go down to five old business Pointy Head. And there says the motion by you, Brett, about applicant to provide the board with locations and a better description of lighting. That's true, but we also ask for the dimensions of the structures. If you remember. Right?
Yeah, I think so, sure.
But other than that, it looked fine to me. Did anybody see anything else? And if not, I'll take a motion to amend item five, the first motion, to include dimensions of structures.
I will move that we approve and accept the planning board minutes from July 26th with the amendment that the motion for to find the site plan review complete also include a recommendation that the applicant provide the dimensions of these structures.
Okay, motion is section, second, to amend the planning board minutes of July 26th as in the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye? Unanimous? Okay. That's easy part. Okay, can take a, we'll open the public hearing on Pointy Head campground at, what's the time, sorry?
It is 6:03.
Okay, folks, we've been here before. Probably realize that. And so, I don't know, leave it open. Anybody who wants to speak, raise their hand, please. Okay, and also state your name and where you live, okay? I don't know whose hand went up first. I think it was the gentleman in the blue in the back.
Ted Kleinman.
Yep.
I live on, at 146 Harbor Drive.
Okay, and your comment, Ted? Ted, would you mind standing up? Which I-
No, I don't mind. I anticipated starting this one. Is the court gonna pick this up? I have a couple of things to say, both on my behalf and on behalf of a neighbor. My property abuts Pointy Head on the south and on the east. Before talking about my own concerns, I want to, I spoke to my neighbor Ken Gott, couldn't be here. He's in Massachusetts. He's got an elderly mother he has to take care of. So I just wanted to speak for him for a moment. Ken's property adjoins Pointy Head on the south and also abuts Harbor Drive on the west. As a consequence, the access road onto the Pointy Head property and into the proposed campground is only eight feet from Ken's property line. Pointy Head's application concedes that the campground will generate more than 130 car trips a day up and down that access road. And for Ken, that means headlights shining onto his property and into his home at night and the noise of traffic both day and night. So my understanding is under the IWO, abutists of the campground are entitled to adequate buffering. I mean, even under the new campground, I U O noticed that there's a 50-foot setback requirement from the access road to protect campground guests, much less abutists. So I don't understand how the applicant can be allowed to have an access road onto her campground that runs right next to Ken's property line. The Pointy Head campground plan provides no setback, no buffer, and no other protection for Ken's property, which I think clearly violates the I U O. And unless the minimum requirements of that are met, the application should submit. It should be denied. So turning to my own concern, I believe there's another violation in the application that pertains to the location of the proposed parking area and several of the units as shown on the site plan that was submitted by Petman Engineering on the applicant's behalf. The applicant's site plan shows that there's a wetland that extends from the east side of my property, where it abuts the Pointy Head property, south along my property line, and it also abuts the Pointy Head course along the south. The wetland then feeds into the adjacent Bass Harbor through a culvert under Harbor Drive. The two contiguous wetland areas on my property and on Pointy Head are covered largely by scrub vegetation of the sort normally found in freshwater wetlands and are connected, as I said, to Bass Harbor on the west. As such, I think the contiguous, the applicant's contiguous wetland falls squarely within the definition of a freshwater wetland contained in the I U O. And the applicant's site plan shows that the wetland running from his property or her property or under my property is part of one contiguous wetland system that's adjacent to Bass Harbor, and together the two are clearly in excess of 10 acres. That is to say, the wetland in the harbor. The site plan also shows that on the applicant's property, the freshwater wetland is connected to another area of freshwater wetland in the center of that property, both through an old ditch and through two smaller bridging patches of wetland that run just south of the ditch and that link the two larger wetland areas together. I think it's worth noting that the 2020 version of the I U O, which I understand is, applies in this situation, provides that freshwater wetland may contain inclusions of land that do not conform to the definitional criteria. I believe that taken together, these two doubly linked wetland areas on the applicant's property are greater than 10 acres and that that alone does not meet the I U O's definition of freshwater wetland. But as I just noted, the definition requirement is also met by the fact that the wetland running from the applicant's property onto mine is also adjacent to Bass Harbor, and taken together, that constitutes a 10-acre area. So the I U O provides that for a minimum setback of 75 feet from the open edge of freshwater wetland, it goes on to define a structure as anything constructed or erected on or in the ground. By that standard, the campground parking area, and it appears in the site plan, units two, five, seven, and perhaps a couple of those, it's hard to measure exactly, violate the 70-foot, 75-foot setback requirement, and for that reason, I believe the campground application should be denied. I'd like to make one other comment as long as I have a chance here. And I'm gonna call attention to the potential impact of the proposed campground on some of Tremont's well water. As you all know, apart from the heavy rain we had a week ago and the rain we had last night, we've had very little rain all summer. The Portland Herald's August 16th edition reported that eight of Maine's coastal counties to our south have gone from moderate to severe drought status since last week. The paper reports that sudden and mid-coast Maine homeowners have experienced dry wells cluttering closets. My wife just told me that she heard that one of our neighbors, one of the people who lives on Route 102A down toward the lighthouse has had their will go dry and been without water for two weeks. The U.S. Department of Agriculture classified Hancock County and coastal areas near us as areas with moderate drought conditions. And this is in a time-limited situation. Two years ago, the Islander, local paper, highlighted concerns that, in its August 20th edition, highlighted concerns that moderate drought conditions were bringing water supply and fireworks to the area, and it reported the drought was already impacting public and private water supplies. I'm not standing here to be an alarmist, but there is evidence that climate change is having a long-term effect on our water supply, and we need to pay attention, I suppose. Our town relies exclusively on well water. So far as I'm aware, no study has ever been done of the geography or the capacity of the aquifer or aquifers that supply the town with water. It's clear that we're experiencing increasing development pressures, but we have no idea of the capacity of our aquifer to meet the demands for additional water that increased development brings. Pointy Head may or may not represent a tipping point. I'm not arguing that it does, but 30 or so, the 30 or so guests who will use its facilities will certainly increase the strain on our water supply. And at some point, those of us with wells near the ocean will start to experience higher levels of salinity and reduced water flows during peak months of water abuse. And before that happens, I would urge that the town conduct a study of the geography and capacity of the aquifer that supplies us with water. And beyond that, I suggest that the board place on applicants proposing to increase the demands on our water supply, the burden of proving that the available water supply can support their development proposals without affecting the quantity or the quality of the water available to the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Saw another hand there somewhere. Yes, sir.
I'm Bobby Walsh. I live at 32 Bass Harbor Woods Road.
Right. I see you have photos. If you come closer, at least, I'm a little blind, so.
Yeah, just, so we, this proposed campground represents a radical change to the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The entire northern border of our property is shared with the applicant, about 390 feet. We have significant concerns with the proposed buffering in the most recent plans.
Excuse me for a second. Are you, as we go into Bass Harbor Woods Road, are you the first house on the left or is that the Kaufmans? I'm confused.
Well, we're, so you turn on the Bass Harbor Woods Road, yeah, we're the first house.
And the Kaufmans are the second?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
So we believe it is inadequate to preserve our privacy and reduce, and reduce the light and sound that's bound to be created by 30 campers. So we have three main areas of concern. For Site 12, which is just to the west of our garden, the existing vegetation, which is represented in this first picture, would not do much to restrict our view from the site, which is just past the 50-foot setback. From, from the ground level, the site will be readily visible through the lower half of the vegetation, all down here, but there are no plans to provide buffering here. So the buffering is kind of at the back of the garden. Then there's this mass on the, on the plant, but this, this mass is, you can easily see through it on the lower end, and there's no buffering planned at this point. So that's the first concern. The second is just past this, as you go, continue kind of towards the west on that side of the property. There are two pines that do not have lower branches, and a third pine, which is dead. So it's, it's wide open there. And from ground level and from our deck, these will do little to block our view of the service buildings and Site 11, which is just a little bit past it and close to our property line, and then probably Site 2, which is a little bit further in, but, but easily seen as you go into the property. It appears like it would be easily seen. So there is no proposed screen to go on that side of, behind these, behind these pines in that open area. And then lastly, the, the view from our house. So this, this is kind of the view from the upper level of our house, the deck and main level, and then just from the ground. So here you can see, you know, the proposed sites and existing buildings can be seen from, from every western-facing window of our house. The proposed 10 to 12-foot thuyas will not provide adequate screening for years. From the upstairs, we can see the road, the proposed parking lot, and Site 3 back here. And then this is the tent platform is right here. Of course, there'll be a big white tent on top of it, and then that's Site 11 right there. And the platform is already eight feet off the ground, and you're adding, it appears to be, you know, an eight-foot tent. It look like, at the minimum, that's gonna be 14 plus feet high off the ground. And it's gonna take years for the crews, I think, to adequately screen that. And, and also considering that people are gonna be walking in and out of that tent, they're gonna need lights, and they have lights on, so, and, and obviously, they're gonna be making those and talking and doing things. So, I mean, campers will, yeah, move regularly from sites to cars and service buildings. They will be using lights, talking, playing music. The proposed buffering does little to mitigate the drastic effects to our privacy or the inevitable noise and light produced. We believe an acceptable plan would include a berm along our shared property line with plantings on top, including in the areas I just pointed out, sufficient to preserve our privacy and limit noise and light pollution. We believe the plan as it stands now is unacceptable and should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Now, you guys feel free to ask questions too, if you want.
I just have a comment. This is probably not gonna be very popular, and I totally understand your perspective, but I, one of the things I found interesting about the, the, I guess I would call it a housing, I think it was a housing development up, up that road, Woods Road, is that a favorite of all that?
Yeah, yeah.
So at some point in time, that wasn't there. And so the people, probably not the current owner, the current owner of the land that's proposing the campground didn't have to look at those houses. And at some point in time, that housing development was proposed, and you stacked in houses, probably, I don't know if they're minimum lot size or not, but it's interesting to me, you know, I was gonna ask, were the trees that were there put to protect the other property from seeing your house? Or what, you know, why were those trees put there? Because if at the time, suppose at the time that the owner that decided to put a development there, the, the current owner of the campground decided at the same time to propose a campground, and just sort of think about what, what would have happened and how that would have played out. And I, I just, there is a temporal element to it, and I don't feel personally that just because the developer that decided to put a development on the Woods Road, because they got there first, it necessarily unduly burdens the tract land next to it. And I'll just let that sit. I mean, it's just a, it's interesting to me that, you know, it kind of goes both ways. I mean, at some point in time, the owner of the land with the campground might have been in their field and said, gosh, I look out over this field, and I look into the woods, I look into an unobstructed view out there, and now there's a housing development there. And it was allowed to go through, and it's, it's there, and the, the folks that are on that property, that's a field now, look across and see houses where they didn't before. So it's, there is an interesting component to it, has to do with who did what first, and I don't feel that, well, I know, I know, I said it's not gonna be popular, but I think you, you have to take a big picture look and look back at, at these tracts of land and what was done, and think about the perspective of the owner that's trying to put a campground in, and how would, how would, at the time that that housing development went in, how did they feel? You know? I'll stop there.
Okay, well, first of all, the one conclusion that, the one thing we don't know is, we don't know when the current owner of Pointy Head bought that property and when those houses went in.
I don't care about the owners. I, I'm thinking about it in terms of land. You know, usually in property law, you think about burdens on land, you don't think about necessarily who owns it. You think about, you know, what, what's, what's this land, what are the rights on this land, what are the rights on the land next to it? And just because, you know, someone develops first doesn't mean that the later developer is somehow has a different rules that apply to them. That, I mean, that's, that's the only, I don't care who owns it, it's just the history of how that area was developed.
Dan put his hand up first, so I'll call him.
I'm, I'm just curious to hear what people's thoughts are. I know it's not gonna be very popular.
I think you're gonna get some comments.
I'm sure I will.
Good evening. I'm Dan Pelagi. I represent some of the abutters, some of whom you've heard from, some of whom you'll hear from in a minute. I hadn't planned on going next, but I'm gonna go next. Respectfully, we have an ordinance, and the ordinance applies only to the applicant. It applies only to the applicant and to this application. Presumably, every other piece of development that happened in that area and anywhere else in town happened in accordance with whatever regulations and ordinances existed at the time. It is absolutely 100% improper to compare standards that applied years ago and development that applied years ago to the planning board's job tonight, which is to make sure that an applicant either meets or doesn't meet development criteria, review criteria, or performance criteria. And this is an experienced board. I, I understand the sentiment that Mr. Witham is, is expressing, I get that, but that sentiment is not part of this board's obligation.
And I'm not suggesting we're gonna apply different rules at all.
So we are here tonight because an applicant has applied for a commercial use that is adjacent to residential uses on a property that spans three different zoning districts. Parcel across the street is Resource Protection Shoreland. Just because it's not on the map, on the site plan map, doesn't mean that's not part of your consideration. There is absolutely no protection in this site plan for that parcel. None. It can't be used for a campground, it can't be used commercially, it is your charge under Land Use Ordinance Section 4G to protect that property. To make sure, you have to deny this application if it doesn't protect that property. And there isn't a proposed fence, there isn't a proposed sign, there isn't a person to monitor, there isn't anything that prevents campers from using that property. As this board may know, this applicant was previously cited by the code enforcement officer for violating land use standards applicable to that parcel. She put tents on it, or any tent on it, or campers used it. There is every reason to believe under this site plan that that can happen, but it can't under the ordinance. There is no protection in the site plan application for that problem. So we moved closer to the tent sites and the cabin sites. When we cross the street into the marine, maritime activities, commercial fisheries zone, still a shoreline zone, protected under the ordinance, and it can't be used for anything other than maritime-based activities. I've submitted some, some arguments, some written arguments to the board, and I stand by them, suggesting that the use of the existing road accessory to a non-maritime use is improper. It can't happen. If there was a parking lot on, in the CFMA zone that the applicant wanted to use for, for the campground, to serve the campground, could she do it? Of course not. What's the difference? There isn't a difference. Let's talk about the application of the site plan itself and the, and the issues that relate to that. I'm gonna start with buffering, since that's what we refer, refer to. There is zero buffering, zero, in the parking area or on the parking area, protecting residents from the lights associated and the noise associated with people parking, leaving, coming and going at night. There's zero buffering along the road, not on the, not, not in the, in the campground parking area and not on the marine, I keep saying marine activities, commercial fisheries, maritime activities zone. None, not a single buffer. Mr. Gott's property is exposed. It's exposed to noise, it's exposed to light, it's exposed to every aspect of people coming and going at all hours. There's, there are no regulation of the hours that people are allowed to drive on the road under this site plan. And poor Mr. Gott, who, who lives eight feet away from the road, is now going to be subjected to a, a, a commercial activity. 100-some-odd cars going in and out, in and out, in and out, all the time, and not one shred of buffering. There's not a fence proposed, there's not a berm, there aren't any plantings, nothing, zero. We move slightly further up the hill to the Welsh property and to the Kaufman property. And you can see, what is it, Sites 10, 11, 12, and 13 are right along that border, right along that, that setback along the shared border with Welsh and Kaufman. Again, not a berm, not a fence, marginal minimal planting to provide some sort of visual buffering. Now, let's talk about what, what, I just saw a lighting plan, just got submitted, well, a week ago. And instead of this property, the current site plan, there's not gonna be lights, it's gonna, you know, people are gonna have headlamps or something like that. Now the place is lit up like a Christmas tree. And there's no buffering from those lights for, for the neighbors. There's lights around the parking area, there are lights at the cabins, there are lights based on the photos that were submitted, there are lights up the stairs to the, to the cabins, and you know what? We've got four sites now, four, five, seven, and 13 that are tents. When the tents are lit internally, that's gonna light up the fabric of the tent, and it's gonna glow there for the, for the neighbors to see. Ground level, maybe it's bufferable, but no, these are 14, 13 and a half, 14 feet high at the peak, and it isn't adequate buffering on this plan to protect the neighbors from that. There's no effort to buffer the property from, on that side, the Welsh, Kaufman, and Gott side, from trespass, from campers. Any of, I've, I've heard several people talk about their experiences camping and the reluctance of campers to go to a, to a utilities building or to a restroom in the middle of the night. Where are they gonna go? They're gonna go onto the Welsh property next to the deck and pee in the, in the trees. There's no buffering, there's no effort. There's no effort to stop them. It's, it's amusing, but there's no buffering, and it's this board's responsibility to, to do that. Wetlands. I brought Mark Bergeron with me tonight from TRC, and I'm gonna let him talk to you in, in just a minute. We think we've made a compelling case that all of this property is interconnected, wetlands under the 75-foot buffer applies. I just wanna be really clear, however, that not all of the area that, the wet area on the applicant's property is forested woodland, wetland, as they have suggested. You can see it, David Mois prepared a, a plan that delineated wetlands. It looks like, looks like this.
That was in one of your submissions, right?
It is a portion of the applicant's submission in July.
Yep.
He has identified several areas of wetland adjacent to Kleinman and the parking area going up into like Sites 5, 7, something like that, that are, he, he's labeled as PSS. Those are freshwater wetlands, they're scrub wetlands, they are not forested wetlands. They are less than 10 acres, but they are connected to wetlands of special significance that Mr. Mois identified and to the harbor, which the Atlantic Ocean is more than 10 acres. Under your definition, a setback, 75-foot setback is required at the very minimum from those PSS marked areas that are connected to a water body of greater than 10 acres. There's no setback that is suggested in the plan. As a matter of fact, the parking area actually infringes on those scrub wetlands, and that's a deficiency in the plan. I'll let Mark talk to you a little bit more about definitions and how that, how that works, and I'll let him answer your questions about that. But for a variety of reasons, the plan as it stands is inadequate, it doesn't meet organic standards, and I respectfully suggest that at this late date, denial is the only option.
Okay, let me ask you this. What drawing or map are you referring to? The one submitted in August 16th by Redmond Moichul and Mr. Mois?
Yeah, this is a, a plan that's dated by Mois Environmental Services, Inc., and it looks like it's dated June 27, '22. Says Protected Resources Map on it. On my submission from TRC.
Yeah, okay. So that's this map, I guess. I, I can't even see the date on it. You can approach, let's make sure we're on the same page here. You can approach the bench. You can approach. Let's make sure we're on the same page here. You can approach the bench. You know, it's the same, but you have better resolution. Yeah, it's, it's the same, yeah.
So, in the August 15 TRC submittal that we presented last week, there's a blow-up, an insert of that same map.
Oh, in your stuff. Okay.
In our stuff. In the TRC, last page of the TRC letter that Mark Bergeron signed. And all that, all that picture is, is just a, it's an expansion of Mr. Mois's environmental, excuse me, Protected Resources Map.
How come you've got a red circle and I have a black one?
And you can see the areas that he has marked. PFO, the forested wetlands, and PSS, which are the scrub wetlands.
Yeah, my, yours just turned out better. Okay. PFO. Oh, up there. Okay, got you.
All right. PSS are the ones that we're talking about that are not forested wetlands.
Which is in the oval, inside the oval?
It's, well, inside the oval and then extending to the east, well into the, into the property. You can see a dotted line, a dashed line as the outline of PSS and PFO. I can, I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, it's just, it didn't reproduce well. That, I've got a really good copy, but mine is not quite as good.
So, just, just to approach, I'm showing you the same map.
Yes.
And you can see what I've highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
You can see it says PSS. PSS?
Yeah, it's on this one here.
Okay.
It's a sliver up there.
All right. So, it's PSS all the way along?
So, this is the dotted line, right, that you were talking about?
Correct. That's the dotted line I was talking about.
Okay.
And for questions about the wetlands issues, I'd like to introduce Mark Bergeron. I'll let him chat with you a little bit. Mark?
Okay, Mark. Thank you, Jim. Good. Members of the planning board, my name is Mark Bergeron. I'm with TRC Environmental. We're based in Augusta, Maine. We're an environmental consulting and engineering company that has been helping Mr. Plugey and the neighbors out. You've seen our letters. You've seen kind of our arguments. We've taken the town's definitions, and I guess I wanna start there. There's a lot of information from the applicant about information from DDPs, interpretation of the regulations, the Army Corps jurisdiction. Those are all great, and we don't necessarily have any disputes there. But we wanna focus on the town's definition. We completely agree. There's also the question of, does a town regulate wetlands? Well, how do you define regulate? It's true that you don't need a permit from the town to impact a wetland. However, the town does have definitions of wetlands. Freshwater wetlands, coastal wetlands, forested wetlands, et cetera. Those definitions need to be met, as you're fully aware, by applicants. And those definitions are included in the campground ordinances and other definitions without setbacks and other regulations. So, in that regard, we believe the town does regulate wetlands. So, what we've been focusing on are those definitions. So, initially, let's say on that western wetland, the one that we've just been talking about adjacent to the road, there is that connection to Bass Harbor through the culvert under the road. So, that's adjacent. So, per your town's definitions, that has to be considered a freshwater wetland. We're not saying that the wetland on the east side of the road is coastal, that it's, no. We're not saying that, but it is connected. So, since it's not a coastal wetland, it has to be a freshwater wetland. Like Dan was just talking about, that definite, the breakdown between the scrub shrub wetlands, which is basically vegetation less than 20 feet in height, and forested wetlands, which are vegetation over 20 feet in height, that dashed line. What we're saying is that 75-foot setback needs to be at least around the PSS, the scrub shrub wetlands, on that portion of it. Our July 19, July 19th letter, we talked about kind of moving a little further back into the site. So, we also, in that letter, took a copy of Mr. Mois's plans and just put a red circle around that. So, that's that ditch connectivity issue. You know, is there a ditch? Is there a wetland? We obviously, TRC has not had the ability to go onto that property and to buy the property. But what we have done is we've gone onto the abutting properties with the butters' permission and looked to see for that large wetland to the east, on the east side of the property, is that connected off-site to other wetlands to make that greater than 10 acres? And it is. That connects all the way out to the big marshy area in the national park land. Because we haven't seen that ditch connection, we can't say for 100% certainty it is a wetland, it's not a wetland, its connection, it's not a wetland. Again, if we could, or if there was other people that could go out there and say, yes, this is this. But based on the information we have, we believe that that connection also connects that western wetland, you know, front of the property, to the back of the property because it's flat, the soils are probably the same. There are two of those little pocket wetlands. Again, as Dan had mentioned, your definition of freshwater includes a provision that freshwater wetlands may contain small stream channels or inclusions of land that do not conform to the criteria of this definition. So, we believe that kind of that whole wetland complex is connected. So, we think, again, that 75-foot setback for campground facilities applies to that. So, happy to answer. Any questions you might have on that?
Yeah, so, I'm just curious. So, the water body piece, could they, so if I'm understanding correctly, there's a, there's a wetland that is connected by a culvert to ultimately Bass Harbor or Salt, the ocean?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. And it's less than 10 acres, but because it's connected to the ocean?
Correct. Right. Because if you look at the freshwater wetland definition, it says freshwater swamps, bogs, marshes, other than forested wetlands.
Hold on. What does it say again?
So, freshwater wetland means a freshwater swamp, marsh, bogs, or similar areas other than forested wetlands, which are one of 10 or more contiguous acres, semicolon, or of less than 10 contiguous acres and adjacent to a surface water body. So, that's our point.
But it excludes, it excludes streams, rivers, and brooks?
Correct.
Which are all freshwater?
Right. Right. But again, Mr. Mois has mapped that wetland breakdown to that culvert.
I guess what I'm struggling with is it's, the fact that it's connected to the ocean. I just don't know if that's a water body. Maybe it is, but it just seems interesting to me that the definition excludes, I wonder if they would have, it excludes rivers, streams, brooks. By that definition, anything that drains into the ocean is gonna be a wetland. Anything. So, that would be, anything, anything on the island that drains, that's adjacent to the ocean, would be a wetland.
Correct. If it meets those definitions.
I wonder if by water body, they meant like maybe a freshwater body, but I don't know. Well, it's something to think about.
And that's part of the problem because the town doesn't have a definition for water body. So, then you go back to Merriam's or Webster or dictionary.com, and essentially, a water body is a body of water, which clearly is the ocean. And, you know, what we wanna focus on is we believe, you know, the intent of all of those wetland definitions are to protect those wetlands. You know, to protect the water quality, to protect the habitats in there. Clearly, the ordinance was written with appropriate setbacks to uses like campgrounds to say, okay, we don't want these types of uses in or exactly right next to these types of wetlands. So, that's why we believe that 75-foot setback applies. Thank you.
I think Jim put his hand up first.
Thank you. So, I think you guys got my comments that I submitted a month ago and they're on the record. So, I don't necessarily go through all of them. What I wanted to do is really focus on the buffering. And also, just to mention, so we, I'm also speaking for Laura Levin. We own, I'm Jim Kaufman. We own 36 Hoult Home at 36 Bass Harbor Woods Road. We live there year-round. We moved there in 2019. We were very attracted to this side of the island after living in Bass Harbor for many years. Quiet side. And this neighborhood in particular was very attractive to us. And so, it was, you know, in 2020, when all this started, we were taken aback a little bit. And I just wanna mention, because I think this speaks to Mr. Witham's comment. You know, I think what we're dealing with here is what is the character of a residential neighborhood that we want here in Bass Harbor and as planning board? That's something you all, I think, need to think about. The problem, obviously, that we have here is we have an ordinance or a districting where this is residential slash business. And so, the ordinance speaks to that by having rules in place so if there is a business, this could be minimally disruptive to the residential neighborhood. And so, that's why buffering is important. We live adjacent to the proposed campground. Site 13 is immediately behind our north property line, which is our backyard. And I've got visual aid here. And so, if you look on their plans, there's no proposed buffering along that line. It just says existing dense vegetation. And if you look at the photographs, the kind of draw is it could be misleading that there is actually vegetation buffering between our property and site 13, and there's not. So, I had these photographs also on what we entered in. But you can see, this is looking from our backyard to where site 13 is. And I've taken liberty to Photoshop in what a tent on a platform would look like from our backyard. And it's quite obvious there. Here's from the back line, standing on the back line, looking toward that site. There's the tent on the platform of what it would look like. And here's from my back porch where I'm sitting pretty much every night with a barbecue. And you could see the tent on the platform. You could see the activities that are gonna be happening around there. And not only that, they would be seeing us and, you know, it's basically an invasion of our privacy. So, it's, and also speaking of what you were saying, you know, if it is a campground, it's one thing. If it's a residence, it's another thing, with people living there year-round, the campground. People are coming and going all the time. We're already dealing with that on Bass Harbor Woods Road with half the houses being Airbnbs. And so, we're, it's becoming as much a transient community as it is a year-round community. And with a campground with 15 sites on the other side of us, we're gonna be surrounded. And the noise is an issue I've brought up before, smoke from fires, and just invasion of privacy, people traipsing around, looking for a place to relieve themselves in the middle of the night because they don't wanna walk 200 feet down to the central latrine, whatever. But the buffering is inadequate between our property line and the site. There's other sites behind the woods that could also be an issue. But this one in particular, they haven't proposed anything to deal with that. So, I think you can't accept the application as it is.
Thank you. Somebody else had a hand up. Ms. Welsh?
Thank you. I'm gonna close out the Welsh portion of the evening. We are new year-round residents to the island and thrilled to be here. And as we've stated before, when we bought the house, it was to be on the quiet side. That's what we love. We submitted a letter to the planning board in July. So, these comments provide some emphasis and additional detail. Bobby, my husband, has already spoken to you about our buffering concerns. I'm just gonna focus on a few other areas. So, I recognize that the campground moratorium is no longer in effect. But I would like to point out that the issues still exist. For example, excessive campground development could significantly increase the transient population, which could in turn negatively impact current traffic conditions. So, the applicant's traffic report estimates 131 trips per day that we've heard from a single-lane driveway, whose allowable use is still under question. This will create significant congestion on Harbor Drive itself, a two-lane road with no room for passing. And for those of us earlier with Harbor Drive, you come up over that hill, you can't see anything. And if there's backed-up congestion, there's accidents waiting to happen, I believe. Changing climatic conditions and reduced precipitation in the town, particularly during summer months, may be negatively impacting the aquifers, impacting the aquifers. This summer's drought is a prime example. Yet, the applicant's plan includes a drawing for a potential new well. As the moratorium stated, there has been no recent study, as Mr. Kleiman has pointed out, by the town of the current state of the aquifers. Campground development like this one creates the risk of privacy intrusions, noise pollution, light pollution, air pollution from campfire activities, all of which threaten to impact abutting and nearby residential property owners and impair their peaceful enjoyment of their homes and reduce the property values. That came straight out of the moratorium. Everything named above is present in this project, and for that reason, this application must be denied. We live in a very quiet neighborhood, and I cannot stress that word enough, neighborhood. And sound carries very easily from barking dogs and singing birds to renters at the Airbnb across the street. With windows open all summer, you hear it all. What will the additional sound of 30 campers be like? Driving in and out, using service buildings at all hours, talking and playing music at their sites, some only 50 feet from our property line. As abutters to this property, we ask that the planning board consider including the following conditions for approval. We also ask that these be put in writing. I am aware that some of these exist in the new LEO voted on in May, but as this application was deemed complete before that took effect, I'm naming them here. An earthen berm to be built along our northern property line with plantings on top, with appropriate drainage and erosion control, sufficient to shield our view of the campground and the campers' view of us. An employee on site 24/7 to manage the campground and the campers and enforce campground rules. The phone number or numbers of the site manager would be shared with the butters so we can reach out if we have concerns. The tent platforms to be no more than four feet off the ground, so as not to be visible with proper buffering. Enforced quiet hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And a requirement that explicitly states that there could be no source of fire anywhere in the campground, except for the single fire ring at the western end of the property. Thank you for your work on this important issue and appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Mr. Baer?
Are we ready?
For you?
Well, I'm happy to respond to everything you've heard.
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, you certainly can respond at any time. I'm not calling sides here.
I understand.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, yeah. If you wish to respond right now, go right ahead.
Thank you. I think that we will. Mr. Mois, can you come up to the table? We're gonna talk about wetlands first. You all have seen the various filings that we've made with respect to
Thank you.
wetlands. Mr. Mois is a wetland scientist, a licensed wetland scientist, soil evaluator, et cetera. I'm not sure if Mr. Bergeron is or not. But we know that Mr. Bergeron has a business in the property and is interpolating a lot of information from websites and plans of others. We also know that the earlier expert that the applicant opponent had, Mr. Plugey had, is not registered in any sort of way to give opinions on wetlands, that's Mr. Brochur. But he did offer you the opinion that this town does not regulate wetlands. I provided you the copy of the letter where he said that. That's attached to my August 16 submission. You'll see that Mr. Brochur states that much in his letter. Would you like me to read that for you, or do you all have a chance to read it yourself?
Well, I've read it, but it probably was a week or so ago. Well, I've read it, but it probably was a week or so ago.
Okay. So, it's document number two. It's about three-quarters of the way back in my August sixteenth filing. It's a letter from Mr. Brochue to the city of Longwood, Tennessee, Danke Legge. And on the second page, he says, first paragraph, second page, three-quarters of the way down, "While the town of Tremont does not regulate wetlands, they would be regulated by state and federal authorities in certain circumstances." So, he acknowledges that the wetlands on this site are not regulated by the town. Mr. Moise is going to tell you again that they're not regulated by the town, and he's going to tell you why, again. Because a larger portion of the wetlands are forested wetlands. By definition, forested wetlands are not included in the broader definition of freshwater wetlands. He's also going to explain to you that there is no connectivity, that this ditch does not connect. He's also going to explain to you that the fact that the front portion of the property where there are wetlands, eventually, water makes its way to the ocean. It's not something that makes that body regulated as a freshwater wetland under your orders. And when we do that, with due respect to Mr. Bergeron's comment that he doesn't disagree with any of the state or federal interpretations of wetland laws, the reason that we bring them to your attention and the reason that we've reached out to federal officials, the reason we've reached out to the state officials with copies of their email communications with Mr. Moise in this package, is because the town of Tremont's definition of wetland is exactly, word for word, what the DEP, Model Shoreland Zoning Ordinance Definition of Wetlands is. You took that. I don't think they took it from you. I'm pretty sure that you took it from them. And if you're looking in the universe of how that should be interpreted, I think that you would do well to listen to how the DEP interprets its own ordinance definitions or model ordinance definitions. So, if you would, Mr. Moise, take as much time as you need to explain to the board where and if we're subject to any wetland regulations on this site.
Good evening, Chairman. Good members. My name's Dave Moise. I'm a wetland soil scientist with Moise Environmental in Bangor. Been at this about thirty-five years, so done a few work, has certainly been before your board, before and before you folks, so you're familiar with our work. Just to try not to be redundant of what Mr. Baer has mentioned, we've been on the site. We were on the site in April and also in May to complete protected resource evaluations, including vernal pools, streams, and wetlands. We returned to the site to finalize our work in May, when we were actually on the site and mapped all of the wetlands on the site. It's important to understand that we do our work according to the eighty-seventh Corps of Engineers Manual. That's considered the standard of practice. We map wetlands. We do not map wetlands that are not wetlands, that do not have hydro soils, hydrated vegetation, and evidence of well hydrology. So, the practice is we map areas of wetlands that are upland next to it, even if it's ten feet wide. That's very commonly mapped as upland because lots of times we end up putting a driveway there, for example, so we can avoid the wetlands. That's how a lot of permitting is done. So, if it's a wetland, it's mapped as a wetland, it's dominated as such. If it's not a wetland, it's not a wetland, mapped as a wetland just because it's next to it or adjacent to it or whatever. Hence, like a couple of pockets have been mentioned by the opposition. They were simply depressions, but they were wetlands, so we mapped them as such. But we didn't map the areas in between that weren't wetlands as well, because they're not wetlands. They didn't meet the definition of wetlands. So, we're done according to the eighty-seven manual. The dominant wetlands on this site are forested wetlands, which, according to your definition, are not wetlands, are not wetlands that you regulate. There are some scrub shrub wetlands on the site, based on the westerly side of Tremont two, that Mr. Bergeron pointed out and is shown on our map. What's important, understand that these wetlands, what contiguous means, what connected means. And I know it was mentioned, I believe, by Lawson, I can't remember, but under consideration of maybe a third party or whatever. So, we basically have helped, tried to help provide that to you. I have emails from two of the DEP staff. One is the shoreline zoning coordinator out of Bangor, which I have here with me. If you, I just received this just to have this as clarification, if I can provide that to you.
Just received it today?
No, we just received this, no, just received this email today, just to support what I'm telling you. I can give it to you right now, it's up to you. But
You don't want to give it to you, you can read it to you, just like other people show you.
Yeah, I think that'd be best at this point, if you want.
Yep. It just says the seventy-five-foot setback only applies to the portion of the wetland that lies within the shoreline zone, within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So, the scrub shrub wetland that lies within two-hundred-and-fifty feet is considered under Natural Resources Protection Act, stated made a wetland of special significance. So, that portion, and only the portion that lies within the shoreline zone, does have a seventy-five-foot setback. That seventy-five-foot setback does not extend beyond that. Number two
Into the Commercial Fisheries Maritime Activity Zone?
I'm sorry?
It doesn't extend into the Commercial Fisheries Maritime Activity Zone?
No, that is the shoreline zone.
You're saying calling that shoreline zone too?
The spring high tidal line, two-hundred-and-fifty feet back from the spring high tidal line is considered the shoreline zone. And within that two-hundred-and-fifty feet, that portion of wetland that lies within that is considered a wetland of special significance and raises seventy-five-foot setback. It does not extend beyond that.
And Dave, do we have any development proposed within that two-hundred-and-fifty foot?
Right. And as far as connectivity goes, I think, obviously, that's crucial. And again, I have from, which was submitted earlier, from DEP John Cullen, who's a DEP field person out of Bangor office, and also from the shoreline zoning coordinator, again, out of Bangor, that ditches and culverts as such do not connect, do not connect wetlands and make them contiguous. Therefore, and they said also, anything on the other side of the road. That's right in the email here. So, basically, everything that's on
What page is that on, sir?
That was, that was
Oh, that's in what you got today. Okay, got you, yeah.
All right. Just want to make sure. But it's also in the correspondence that we submitted from John Cullen.
Okay.
John Cullen.
Which is in my, in my report.
Right. I have John Cullen here, okay, okay. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It was attached to my report.
Yep, I see, yep.
Yep.
So, Dave, I'm not sure if you heard my question to you, is any of the proposed development of this Pointy Head campground, is any of it within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the shore?
No, that's my understanding, no. No, the project is well outside of the, well, outside of the two-hundred-and-fifty. As far as the ditch goes beside the road and also the ditch that's in the middle of the site, that does connect before is physically, it drains, the larger wetland it is to the east, and there's no doubt that that well, the forested well, that lies to the east of the project, is part of a much larger contiguous wetland system. Okay? That is definitely more than ten acres, but it's forested.
Okay.
Okay? The dominant vegetation, and it's probably forested. Therefore, it's not a well, based on your definition of well. As far as the connection to it, one of the comments of Mr. Bergeron, a lot of his, well, typically, the Army Corps of Engineers connects it if it's got, if it's a ditch and it's got cactails on it or whatever. Well, you can see from the email from Sean Mahaney that that's not the case. If you take a wetland, say this is a wetland, and you dig a ditch down through that wetland, that ditch is part of that well. You take a non-wetland area and you dig a ditch through it, that means it's like Interstate ninety-five, you go over down ninety-five, there's cactails growing everywhere in the ditches. It could have all, all the, you know, characteristics of a well, and cactails growing and maybe some water in it or whatever, but it's a ditch. It's always going to be a ditch. That's the difference. So, if it's a ditch in a wetland or a ditch in an upland, you'll see on our mapping that the ditch is solely in an upland area. The berms are quite obvious, there's no doubt it's a ditch. It's a ditch. And that was a very common practice. I see it all over the island. They cut the wetlands with ditches to try to help drain it. Lots of times, back when it was pasture land or a little farmstead or something like that, very common practice. But it's a ditch. And for purposes of connectivity and whether or not it's contiguous, again, the email I have here from Don Heard, from the shoreline zoning coordinator, the email we have from John, from John Cullen, DEP, those are not used to connect the wetlands for purposes of being contiguous. Never have been. And the idea that, I know in your definition it says it could possibly include non-wetland areas, that's true, because if you go out there and you map a large, large wetland area, you're bound to have a little pocket here and there, maybe the size of the table or whatever, that may be a slightly, you know, convex shape, a little depression, humic or something like that. Lots of times, those kind of areas do get included in them. When you're actually out there mapping the wetland, we don't just all of a sudden, well, let's just include, you know, this area over here, we'll include this area over here. And that's not how well information is done. And that was not the intention of these, of this definition. As Mr. Baer said, those definitions are taken word for word right out of chapter one thousand, which is the municipal shoreline zoning guidance. It's a DEP document. Therefore, I went to DEP staff to make sure that we were clear on the definitions and what was considered connected, what was considered ditch, whatever, so that you could have your third-party reference, if you will. And they'll just take my word for it, if you will. Try to hit all the highlights here. Now, I'm going to be redundant on a lot of things that have been submitted to you already. I think that's it. I'm certainly willing to answer questions. Hope that's clear.
Do you have any questions?
Not right now. Do you?
Maybe. I don't know if I follow all this. I want to make sure I understand it. My understanding is there's kind of two potential wetland areas. There's one that's, you know, has a culvert that drains into the ocean.
The one that's up by one oh two, yeah.
Correct. And I think, by the way, I looked, I think a water body is, I think ocean, because there's other places where water bodies use. It talks about piers, it talks about, so I think it probably is a water body. So, I think that would
I agree with that.
Yeah, because if you, if you take the culvert out, it would just drain there anyway. So, it would be, and I think the ocean is a water body. So, why, explain again why that wetland is not coming into play or impacted by this proposed development?
Well, both from the shoreline zoning coordinator and from the, from John D. Staff, a ditch is not, is not considered a connection. And if it's on the other side, if the shoreline zoning coordinator went even further, because it actually lies on the other side of one oh two, then it's not connected. For purposes of contiguous.
Historic ditch or a modern ditch, for that matter, connects two separate
I don't know what a modern ditch is.
See, I don't, but I don't view that as being necessarily dispositive of what we're talking about. Maybe I'm completely missing it. To me, there's the, sort of, I guess I would call the inland wetlands, where there's a ditch that connects them, and then there's the shoreline wetland, I'm sure I've been using the wrong term, that has, it drains into the ocean. Am I not looking at
The scrub, you say, the scrub shrub wetland that's inland of one oh two versus the coastal wetland that's on the other side?
So, there are three wetland areas, right? There are the two that are connected by the ditch, then there's the one closer down to the ocean. The
Well, there are two, two connections that are in question, that I believe that you, there's the one in the center of the site.
Right, right.
I want to talk about that secondly, actually. I first want to talk about the one that's close to the ocean.
Okay, put the right, the one on one oh two, the one on one oh two.
Because
It's a ditch and a culvert that drains under one oh two, and eventually does go over into the coastal well and into Bass Harbor.
Okay.
Right? That, for purposes of considered contiguous or connected, DEP staff and I, that is not the scrub shrub wetland that we're talking about, the BSS well, is not considered contiguous with the ocean. Therefore, you don't have your ten acres.
Okay.
For purposes of
Okay, so the connection is, the connection to the ocean is broken or whatever. It doesn't qualify, meet the definition of a wetland because that connection to the ocean does not connect it to
The connection is not a well, in this way.
Okay. And then there's the, the two others, I guess, that have the ditch, like, that are inland, that they're, have some scrub brush and whatnot. The, I'm looking at the submission by
That well in by itself is not ten acres, it's only just a few acres.
Okay.
The scrub shrub, scrub shrub wetland is only a very small portion of the wetlands on the site.
Yep.
The predominance is forested.
And, okay, that's what I want to get at. And I think what you're saying is the, the definition of, the definition of a forested wetland
Got right here.
Which takes it without, it takes it outside the definition of a freshwater wetland, is a freshwater wetland dominated by woody vegetation. So, there's some sort of subjective, because in the, in the submission from TRC that we were looking at earlier, Mark, there's a piece of it, I think, that they're saying is not, it doesn't have forested trees on it. And I think what the, what the applicant is saying is, well, that you have to look at the dominant, what the dominant features are of that wetland, and if it's dominated by trees, if there's a piece around it that isn't, you still, it's still a forested wetland. Is that kind of what you're saying?
There is a section of it that is dominated by scrub shrub wetland.
Okay.
Yeah, it's shown on our map. That's a, that's an enlarged one, if you want, I highlighted it, so.
Yeah, I've got a lot of maps.
It's basically the same enlargement that Mr. Bergeron provided.
Okay.
At the risk of not offering clarity, I'd like to try.
Yeah.
We acknowledge that
Please.
Scrub shrub wetlands, it's about one-point-three acres, I believe, Dave, on our property in, near the front. That's about one-point-three acres. And under your definition, if it's less than ten, it's not regulated, because your wetland definition is ten or more acres.
Right.
There's that wetland. Then, there's another wetland that we contend, and the DDP and the Army Corps agree, is not contiguous with that one-point-three acre wetland.
Yep.
And that's forested wetland.
Okay. Okay.
Paul, does that mean they're contiguous?
I think it's all, I'm still on the uptake. I'll get it. I think so.
And the ditch that we've been talking about connects the forested wetland, even though you're, you're saying that they're separate, it's not contiguous, I understand that. What you're saying is the forested wetland and scrub brush, the scrub wetland?
Are not connected because that's a ditch.
I understand that, okay. But those are the two back there. One is, one is forested and one is not forested?
Correct.
Okay. Or you better way to ask it, okay.
But it's actually where, where those two are connected, the, on both sides of that ditch, actually, it's forested with a minor component of the scrub shrub. The scrub shrub doesn't start until you get further towards the west, toward one oh two, which is, that was depicted on the, on the map there. I know it's difficult to see on that.
Yeah.
It's eleven by seventeen, so.
You don't have a larger drawing of that? Any chance?
No, I have a larger one of the site plan itself.
Which doesn't show the wetland area.
It, it shows the wetlands, but probably not the detail that Dave reported.
Okay. Any more questions on that, anybody? For now?
Would you like me to point to that?
Yeah, yeah, I think Beth just did, but yeah, I see them.
PSS.
Yeah, well, PFO.
And then the PFO, it kind of shares
That's the forested, okay.
Right, and over here is where that ditch is, and then the bigger wetlands over here.
Okay.
This part here is actually for, the scrub shrub starts right here where this dotted line is.
Okay.
So, we just, we delineated the edge of the, where it goes from forested to scrub shrub. So, this is scrub shrub all the way out through here. This is the shoreline zone, okay? So, this portion here that is within the shoreline zone is a well of special significance because it lies within the shoreline because it lies within the shoreline zone, and it does have a 75-foot setback because of that, according to the National Resources Protection Act, state of Maine. So this portion of the wetland does not have a 75-foot setback because it's outside of the shoreline zone. This is your shoreline zone.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it seems like the hot topic thus far has been buffering and screening, so I'd like to ask Steve Rubble, who had any help from Alina, to address our buffering plan, explain it to you, and tell you why we think that it is an adequate buffer, and that a lot of what you referred tonight and pictures that you've seen are not consistent with what we are proposing to do.
Hi. I'm Steve Rubble, I'm landscape architect, I keep our offices in Winter Harbor, so I'm across the bay. Across the bay, sorry. Yeah, that's up in the ocean. Um, so, uh, I had something kind of prepared, but I was a little taken back in the adamant conclusion that the buffer is not sufficient. And I'd point out right from the beginning, the ordinance requires five to six-foot tall vegetation, and we're coming in with 10 to 12 foot, literally twice the size that's required. So I think that the adequacy question by someone that maybe isn't in the field that I've been doing for 27 years is a little questionable. Um, so to that point, uh, we've walked that property several times, I have with, with the applicant and their other representatives. We've looked from the sites of these structures that will be down there, and imagined, looking through the existing vegetation that's on both sides, but mostly on the property line, um, where are the gaps? What can we do to screen that? Um, we've identified that there is a fast-growing species of deer-resistant, wind- and salt-resistant trees with very low, um, disease and pest, um, incidence. And, um, that is the, the theory that we've, um, proposed on this project, is, is that. This thing is going to be, maybe not bulletproof, but the, the most, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, not tolerant, but the most successful vegetation that we can find for this, because we want it to be successful. We want the neighbors not to have to look in, we don't want to have to look out. I mean, it's, it's there to be a visual screen, that's what we intended to do. Um, if you research these plants and you get through all the nursery hype about how wonderful they are, and you go to the experts in the botanical field and look at this, these things grow at three to four feet per year.
Are they low branching?
They're down to the ground, and these particular trees with those ground branches will actually root. So furthermore, and, and so, um, they, they say, and I'm bouncing around, so I apologize, I might say something a couple of times. Um, so, so these, these botanical experts, um, they say that these things grow 50 to 60 feet tall, 12 to 20 feet wide. We're going to be planking them in seven-foot rows, eight feet on center, so they will certainly create that buffer. At three feet of height, four feet that they, they say that they grow, um, these will surpass their size and installation in the four years that we're talking about for the ordinance to, to say, you know, have we satisfied that buffer? So backing up from that point, um, I, I was the passage, everybody's like, oh, three to four years, let's get little trees. And I said, no, we don't want to do that. We've had a drought this year. What if these things don't want to grow? What if we only get a foot a year? And you'll notice on this application, previous application, we, we went with 10, eight to 10-foot trees. When we resubmitted here, these are now 10 to 12-foot trees, and there is a, a certain thing...
In the most recent buffering plan?
In the most recent buffering plan that is before you, and takes precedent over the previous, um, submissions. Um, so there is a, a, an adage in the nursery business of sleep, creep, and leaf. And what that means is the first year a plant is planted, it goes through transplant shock and the handling and whatnot, and it probably doesn't do real well the first year. The second year it starts to grow a little bit, but the third year it takes off. So that's the sleep, uh, leaf, creep, and then leap. Um, and so with that adage, they finally agreed to say, okay, let's look at the, the very conservative side and say, these things want to grow a foot a year, which is extremely conservative for this particular plant. At that elevation in four years, not counting the first, we'll add three feet, so now we're talking 13 to 15-foot trees. When we were out on site and we're doing our evaluations of the sightlines from windows to the various, um, platform sites, we found that 13 feet is that magic number of where we're obscuring that view. So we feel that these trees are the right thing for the location, they're going to create a quick screen, and they are going to, um, block the view because of, of how high they grow. They don't grow three feet wide every year, they grow three feet tall. They go about a foot in, in width. And they can go, the, the parents of this particular species, one of them grows, it's, was 100 feet, and the other one was 200 feet tall, and the one that was 200 feet had a 20-foot trunk. Um, so we think that the screening is actually adequate.
Well, if I understand your buffering plan correctly, you're using a combination of existing vegetation and your, and plantings, correct?
Yes.
What I heard from some of these abutters was that there are gaps within the existing vegetation that aren't being covered by the buffering plan. And I also heard that Mr. Ken Gott has no buffering.
Uh, we have the, the entire wetland, um, complex over there, that was buffering, we, we saw no, no visual access between the two. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the other house. Um, that is a, prior to us even going forward with, or my involvement in this particular project, um, there was a study of how driveway, the headlights go into that driveway, and they had, the applicant has erected a visual screen to block headlights coming in and shining that property. And there are a series of, um, I think, are these the same trees? There are a series of, of evergreens along there, along the property line between the two driveways, his driveway and the driveway access.
I've been down there, I haven't seen that. You can look right over at his property. I, I, maybe we're talking about two different things. Mr. Gott, as you go...
They're not huge, they're not huge at the moment, but there's a series of, of plantings along there, at the moment.
At the moment, but you're not going to do any other thing other than what's there now?
Uh, it, it wasn't felt that we needed to do that. I'm sure if that's the condition that we need to, to, to reach...
Okay, and the, the other question is, I mentioned that some of the abutters are concerned about gaps within the existing vegetation. How do you answer, how, how do you answer them for asking, or being, having that concern? How do you address that concern?
Number one, we didn't see the gaps that they're referring to. We can't go to their property and look out their windows and whatnot, but we haven't approached them to ask that because we feel that was public. Um, so we didn't see that. Again, I would feel confident that if we need to add a handful of trees to, to make that buffering better than what it is, I believe that we would do that, possibly. Um, you know, five trees, 10 trees is not going to, you know, that, that's not going to be the thing that shuts this down. Our honest endeavor here, I mean, a few more trees wouldn't have been a big deal, but when we were out there at those sites and we're looking at the houses, these are the areas that we need to block. And per the ordinance, where there's, um, existing buffering, you don't need to create a buffer, on purpose.
Yeah, and, I mean, let's, let's be, you know, practical about this and realistic. The, the ordinance actually is, has some, uh, you know, language that, um, gives the planning board some latitude, and the, the ultimate, you know, result needs to be a complete visual screening of the activity from the neighbors. And if the, if the top, if the topography, for whatever reason, suggests that there needs to be higher trees or different or more trees, that's what you do. Because the, I mean, the standards, it's, I, I know you're getting the, the tree size, but it, in that section, it talks about one or more of the following.
Right.
Yeah, and that's just an example of one.
Oh, I get it. We can put a four, or a five-foot berm, is it? I mean, whatever the berm, if you put that there. And if you imagine your Christmas tree, when you put that on top of a hill, you're going to look right under. So now it's right at eye level. Would you rather have it down on the ground, or would you have it up? You, you know, I mean...
Well, uh... Is the, is the most recent plan, is it August 15th? Is that the one? August, it's the revision, revision date, is that one?
Yes.
You know, I did, just...
And again, we could do, probably do some buffering, but it was...
And the berm could also have a fence on the top, too.
I'm sorry?
A berm can also have a fence on the top, doesn't necessarily have to have trees.
It can, but it was an eight-foot fence, I believe?
I, I may well say, just a quick look at this and, and the comments that were made today from, from the public. Um, and Mr. Gott's not here, I believe Mr. Kleinman spoke for him. I, there is nothing along that road, the, the driveway, even assuming we get to the network.
We're not proposing anything, I will give you that. There are some shrubs along there.
I suggest you might propose, you might put something here.
Sure.
That, that, you know, we can, people can see and get a feel for. And then, um, Mr. Kaufman, I mean, his pictures... I'm sorry.
No, no, Jim Kaufman, yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah, his pictures were actually pretty compelling. And when I looked at the, if you look at the plan, there's little trees there, there's little symbols for trees. They, you know, there's a couple that go over there, and then it says, existing dense, mixed vegetation massing. And, and it's kind of like a, I don't know, with the blob on the map. But that's what it looks like. It, it's not, it, it doesn't accomplish what the, what the... If we had to vote today on, on whether this met the performance standard, I would say no. So I, take for it what you will, but, but I, I do think that there's some, some gaps to be filled on, on the road and on the, on, and that's, that assumes we even get to that point. But I, I just, I mean, you can see right through, you, you can. And I, I realize that, you know, the plan is to, is to fill that in, and, and there's some, um, been some good faith statements that you would, if there are things that needed to be addressed, we'd do that. I'm just suggesting that you might, you might, you know...
Well, and I would stick to the, the, the trees aren't there yet, so it's...
Yep, yep. Yeah, well, I know, but there's none proposed, there's not, there's not...
What we think it's going to be like, and, you know. And the same, same from both sides, I'm sure, that, you know, when we went out there, we looked, and we didn't see the houses when we saw certain areas.
Yeah, I don't think you're up on the platforms, though, right? Because they're not there yet. So you've got to, you've got to actually...
Well, we tried to...
Okay, okay.
Address that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hey, you take, take the comments for what you will.
Is that evergreen?
Yes. It's a cedar.
It is, yeah. It's a cedar gardens.
Yeah, there you go. I don't know, is there further questions?
And no buffering all along the road? You have no buffering along, uh, Harbor Drive itself?
The hill, we do have, actually, there's some, some things on there. Down where there is one gap where the hill falls off, where you can see back behind, um, and we have some, um, large evergreen shrubs going down there to create a buffer. There's currently a bench in that neighborhood at the moment, in that part of the, part of the property.
There you go, okay. Where are they at? Oh, a couple of things there, okay.
Is it your, is it your position, Mr. Rubble, that with the planting down near one oh two, that's an effective screen from the campground?
It is, because the road is depressed at that point. So the, the landform does some work right there, and then as you, uh, I guess, if you're approaching from town and going out, um, the house is blocking, and then the landform, so we're filling that gap between the house and the landform. That's what happens.
Any other questions, comments?
No, we need some sound buffering here.
Yeah, from over there, well, uh, if they would have...
That's what I'm saying.
The, uh, I don't think they ever got a permit for that, so, but that's, that's not our, our permitting process, that's like... Anybody else wish to make comments?
So I'm, I'm a little late for the party, but I was just curious if there was a traffic and noise study done, and you said that was a potential group who does that?
Uh, there's an engineering manual for traffic generation reports that's used almost exclusively by engineers when they do, do projects like this. And they look in there, and it says, oh, campground with, per site, we anticipate so many trips per day, and that's what they use, correct, Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Yes. I can't think of the name of the manual right now.
I'm sure the leader can tell you.
What is it?
ITE manual.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, there was no actual traffic study done. Your name, please?
Melissa Tierney.
Okay.
Standing 12 to 15, sorry. Um, the other question I had was, a couple of people mentioned this, and we thought about this. People are not making their way to the bathrooms at night because it's late and they're on a, um, you know, a platform, and they go to the bathroom, let's say, you know, five months of the year, times, you know, 20 camp sites, times, you know, how many people that might also go into the wetland and into, um, some of the other areas. Has there been any thought to that?
So I think, you mean like urine contamination of the...
I really don't think that would happen.
No, there's not. There's not been a...
There's no, no study on urine migration through, to the wetlands.
This theme of bad, bad behavior, which I think if you regulate it, if it were to occur, but I don't think that it's a premise from which an applicant should be measured, that there are any people who are going to do things. I'd like to think that you and I would be, uh, I don't know why, but the people who we, our guests would be more different. This is sort of bizarre. Don't think we've got to order Mr. Kaufman's, yeah, we'll take a week.
No, I don't think it's, um, no, it's not, it's probably...
I've never heard of a campground in, people urinating, maybe it's out there, I'd love to, I'll do some research, we'll see if we can find that. I have never, I've never heard of people urinating outside a campground impacting the water quality of a wetland or a well. I haven't heard that. My sense is that actually that water, if you do a study of it, it's actually pretty clean. And then it went, it goes into the ground, it's pretty quickly, probably either just does its thing, you know, but, but we can look at that.
I, I think that could, well, we're going to hear it now, Ms. Levin.
Well, no, I'm going to actually go back to, um, Laura, I'm going to take that, Bass Harbor Woods Road, back to the single-lane driveway and 15 cars at any given time trying to get out, because based on the traffic study you're talking about, that's probably assuming people are making their own coffee, cooking their own meals. That's supposedly not going to be happening here. So, you know, 15 cars trying to get out in the mornings to get their coffee, to go on their way, to do what, you know, enjoy the park. Meanwhile, Jim's going to be trying to get to work at the end of Bass Harbor Woods Road with all of these cars sitting there idling, waiting for, you know, this time of year, there's a lot of traffic along Harbor Drive there. Um, you know, so we've got carbon monoxide to map, you know, Jim and other people trying to get out of our road. You know, so we've got carbon monoxide to nap, you know, Jim and other people trying to get out of our road. There's big, heavy trucks coming through all the time because of construction. It's just gonna be a hazard. And then there's that line curve, and it's a two-lane road, and you've already seen what crazy drivers are, that is coming here, tourists, so that's just something I wanted to throw into the mix there, too.
Thank you. Go back to this woman, I, I'm sorry, I forget her name.
Melissa Tierney.
Melissa, okay. Your question, I, I think the issue was not contamination from people doing their business away from the, but the visual impact on the neighbors.
Visual and the smell, one of the things.
All right, can we respond to the comments about traffic?
Sure.
Alina, could you tell them what the traffic impact analysis demonstrates?
So, back, um, back in September, we did a traffic generation letter that analyzed the impact of the proposed development on adjacent roadways. And we used the manual that you referenced, the standard, engineering standard, it's the I T E manual, and you find appropriate land use for the proposed development, and you plug in a variable, and it gives you, based on statistical models, what the anticipated trip generation per day and peak hour for the land use that you select. So, the letter that we submitted did anticipate at a very peak, and I, in my opinion, consider a very conservative number of one hundred and thirty-one trips per day. That is throughout the entire day, not concentrated in the morning or an afternoon. One hundred and thirty-one trips, so in and out is two trips. One hundred and thirty-one trips per day, with a peak hour generation of twelve trips per hour. And again, peak, every single site is still leaving at the same time, or in the same time. So, those numbers, when you compare it to the actual annual average daily traffic that you can get the data from D O T for the main road, when you compare it to the main road traffic average over an entire year, it's about six percent of what you would see on the main road. So it's a very small amount of traffic compared to the traffic that the road sees on average over the course of the year. Of course, you know, summer varies very greatly from winter. So in the summertime, higher traffic on the main road, even smaller percentage of the trips would be coming from this development. So also, what, another thing that was brought up was the narrow existing entrance drive. It is a one-lane driveway. However, there is a wide spot at the top, and current practice and use of the driveway is that there is, you know, a pausing up at the top and one-way in and out. So there is enough visual, so that you can see cars entering and exiting. It's worked well in the past, and we don't see any reason, with the small amount of traffic that's proposed for this development, that it shouldn't work in the future. How do you answer any other questions?
And the I T E trip generation from the manual is something the D O T uses when they issue road opening permits and that sort of thing, correct?
Yeah, it's the standard-
It's the standard use, okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's thick volumes. And it's just based on years and years and years of traffic studies, particularly land uses, and that, and that's kind of our, our best tool in anticipating what this development might produce for traffic. And as I said, when you look at it and you think about the use of this light, of this actual site, I, I, in good faith, can, can say that I, I consider the calculations that we've presented here to be a conservative estimate.
When you say conservative, does that mean a higher number than you anticipate?
Higher than me.
Okay. I was gonna ask that same question, because conservative to me, to me means that it could be higher.
No, conservative in that actual traffic, I wouldn't be surprised if it was much less.
I see a hand there. I'm sorry, you have a mask on, I don't recognize you.
My name's Peter Russo. I've been living in Bass Harbor seasonally for about the last thirty years. I live on Nine Jamie's Drive. I'm also a property owner on Bass Harbor Woods Road. I have no structure up there. It's just a piece of bare land that appears to be budding up against this project that I want to do here. Just a statement and a question. First of all, a statement in regards to traffic. When you talk about vehicular traffic, you know, in campers, they're not showing up in a Toyota Tercel or a Nissan Sentra. They're usually, in my years of doing stuff, they're usually pretty big pickup trucks. Just saying. That, that's my statement. The second thing is about the buffering and, and the tree planting. First of all, the species of plants that we're, you're gonna put in, or the trees, are the invasive. And number two, I could shake your head, no, that's a good thing. And the other thing is, what happens, you know, you know, the sleep creep and leap stuff? We've had a very dry summer this year. Is there any kind of provision that's gonna, when these plants don't creep, leap, and leap, or whatever? They, they die out, and you have to replace them, and who's gonna water these things?
Well, the applicant has a burden to- It's a burden, it's on the applicant to make sure that these things-
If that's what's specified in the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
For those of us who don't have the plan, what is the tree?
What is the what?
The tree that they're proposing.
Giant?
They, they-
It's a giant?
It's a, yes, it's a, the common name is a green giant arborvitae. It's a phylia, stendishii, placata.
Isn't it a cedar?
It's a cedar.
It's a cedar tree. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
You want to say? Somewhere.
Okay. I see a hand back there. I can't see who it is.
Hi, Marsha Cohen, I'm at 1046 Harbor Drive, so I'm in the slider. My question, and I've asked this before, I am very concerned about the fire hazard. We have a very dry summer. I know. Theoretically, nobody's supposed to have fires, except in this major fire pit in the central. Who's gonna prevent somebody from bringing out a grill, from lighting fires, or smoking cigarettes, throwing in woods? Is Daniel Moore mentioned this? Is there somebody, I think Moore mentioned it, or maybe, maybe, I don't know. Thank you. Somebody's gonna be there twenty-four hours a day. I mean, this is a, I assume it's a business. I assume somebody's gonna record who's going in, who's going out, what's happening. Has, have we done a fire study? Is the fire, I know we have a volunteer fire department. What happens if there's a fire? You know, we, what's to protect our properties? Or do I have to try to get a zillion dollars worth of insurance? And, you know, we do have, but we have trees. What happens to those trees? I'm just really concerned that we are not necessarily here in the summer most of the time, but I'm very concerned about the risk the fire has, and also of the lack of water. You know, we would, the waters, you know, we've got trees, whenever everything, if there's a dry summer, if the aperture dries up, I did hear the story that up the road, well, they dry until two weeks for people to get their drinking water back. So these are things that I'm really concerned, and I know once the process goes on and it gets approved, who's gonna watch any of this? So, I just, that was my comment, and I do have a very big fear of fire.
With the, with the fire, concern about fires, are you concerned about the central fire pit? Or concerned about individual fires at each campsite?
I'm concerned about, well, especially-
Both, okay.
Nobody there to monitor it. Are there gonna be, you know, fire extinguishers all over? I know we're depending on people if there's a fire to do the right thing. We live in a very wooded area, and you can see the condition of most of our lawns. It's weak, weak drive, so it's, it's a very big concern for me.
Mr. Barrett, do you care to respond to that?
Sure. The plan says one fire pit, as you know, one of the smokeless fire pits, by the way. So if some-
Oh, it is a smokeless fire pit?
It's one of those smokeless.
I didn't see that. Okay. No, it's not. Okay.
All right. And if there, so if somebody goes out and starts a road fire, go tell them they can't have a fire. I mean, we, we know that one of the neighbors spends every, every night out there doing barbecue, but I guess, you know, we can't. But recall that the fire chief reviewed our plans, made suggestions, we incorporated those suggestions into it. So there's that, the fire protection provided for in our plans. There is gonna be somebody there twenty-four hours a day. Of course, we're gonna know who's coming and out, who our guests are. And in response to the other comment back there, there are no R V vehicles. There aren't no trailers being followed in this place. Every campsite is, is as you've seen in the photographs, it's either a tent site or a cabin.
Crazy situation.
Crazy situation. People aren't moving there.
So, you wouldn't be opposed to it being a condition, if this were to get approved, that no fires other than in the actual fire pit, designated fire pit?
Absolutely.
When I spoke with the fire marshal, he emphasized to me that I had a right to a fire at every site. And I said, "I do not want a fire at every site. I live there. I live in the oldest structure in Bass Harbor. Point again. I love it. I cherish it. I would never do anything to harm that site. I will not allow any fires. I live there, and I live there twenty-four seven. So be assured that it'll be taken care of."
Thank you. Any more hands? Yep?
I'm Floyd Witherman. I'm Adeline's partner in this business. And I just wanted to remind everybody that it is an Airbnb business. That comes with a lot of protections, including insurance. People can't just pop in and take a site. There is no camping, anything like that. If somebody were to start a fire, they would be essentially banned from Airbnb. I can't imagine somebody taking that risk to not travel anymore. These people are also, they're not hanging out in this campground as much as you might think. It's a unique lodging. It's the fastest-growing part of Airbnb. People are just looking for something different than a hotel room for the night. They're not planning to cook there. They're actually going to help the economy of our town by spending their money elsewhere. I just, I understand and appreciate everyone's concerns. As far as buffers go, I'll put a hundred trees if I have to, if that's what it takes to not see the neighbors, as they don't want to see us. That's not good for our guests, any more than that. I, definitely, there's somebody there twenty-four hours a day. It is our business. So there's a lot of protection that a campground normally wouldn't have, or even a hotel, because Airbnb governs that for us. So, I don't know if that helps anybody, but it's not traditional of a campground.
There'll be no signage indicating sites. This is a campground. Come and join us. It will look exactly the way it looks now. They will come to the address, check in, one of the sites, spend the night in a queen-size bed with oriental carpeting. No cooking, nothing, only small lights on the ground that are like spotlights, and do their thing on the island.
But it is a campground.
Yes, ma'am?
It is a campground.
Well, you, you made us, you, you forced us into that hole after your attorney said that we were not a campground.
Right, but then now you've got to conform by the campground rules, right?
Well, that, that is something you forced us into. It's still an open issue, depending on how this goes. But, I mean, we're here acting as though this is a campground, because the chairman said we weren't taking it any other way.
Mr. Barrett, I heard you say, "Our attorney said this is not a campground?" When was that?
Your attorney?
Collier?
No, no, no.
She's never been, represented us in this case.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, she did. She wrote a letter, and you threw it away. You said, "I don't care what she said." It's dishonest. You want me to find the letter and show you? Go back to the, the, the planning board, the meeting minutes, and review them? You have a letter from Diana Kong, when we pointed out that we did not meet the definition of a campground that we chose, and to ignore it. You said, "That's too bad, Mr. Barrett. Do you want to proceed or not?"
I don't quite remember that, but I'm not gonna argue that point. Maybe we did get it, something from her.
I don't remember at one point, it was not clear which way, and we went this route.
What I remember, Mr. Barrett, is you saying, "Okay, we've now agreed, this is a campground."
To, essentially, I-
Because, because you would not agree with the letter.
That's okay. He's the chair. He made the call.
That's fine.
Do we want to proceed with our review of the application? Do you want to go through the other reviews?
I think we see other hands up here.
Sorry, just one more point of clarification. So I just wanted to be really clear about the whole fire and the fire pits and all that kind of stuff. So are you saying that at every site, no one will be allowed to bring any kind of cooking apparatus to cook their hot dogs or what?
Absolutely. There are no fire scenes, none. None, 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 from the beginning, from the inception. I do not want that.
I just wanted that understood.
I'm a resident also of the community. I live here also. And I care about that. I would never, ever let those woods allow any fires anywhere.
It's also in the rules, in the contract with people, that's in-
Part of Airbnb.
Can I ask you this? You know, we asked it our, last time we all met, for some information on, and descriptions, dimensions of the cabins and, and tents, the platforms, and all that sort of thing. And I was surprised to see that there were tree houses, and that was never mentioned during the site visit.
I don't know what you heard, what you're doing here, Mr. Chairman. Does it make a difference with the structure?
I don't know. They're pretty high.
You're up there, no higher.
Twenty-one feet, sixteen feet.
That's the peak of the roof.
Right, okay, yeah. And what-
Those that are at that height are actually in the woods, not visible.
These, these actual photos here are, these are just something you grabbed somewhere, right? They're not like-
Much like Photoshop.
Yep.
All the tree houses, as Mr. Witherman's pointed out, are in locations in, in the woods.
Okay, and there's another one that's gonna be, or two, that's gonna be, the facade is the side of a boat?
It's a cabin, and it has a facade of a part of a boat.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else? Yeah, no more comments. Okay. Time is up. You guys have any questions? Any more questions or comments?
I noticed that while Mr. Witherman's thinking, Mr. Chairman, I, I was certainly prepared and eager to say so to, to provide even more buffering. I didn't get a sense that the type of buffering that we were proposing was inadequate, or the amount of it, perhaps, increased. I noticed you scheduled a meeting or tentative gap for the thirteenth. We can file a revised screening plan. Anything else you had to offer?
Thank you. Let me close the public hearing first. Brett, are you all set?
Good.
And Beth, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. It's seven forty-eight, I guess, by now. We'll close the public hearing at seven forty-eight. P M, okay. Finding a fact, okay. It's getting late. We have a lot of information here tonight. We probably have the new dad back at our next meeting. And I think that we should actually go through that with fresh, there's a lot to review here. Go through that fresh on the September thirteenth meeting. Mr. Barrett, do you have any objections to that?
I have no objection. I would like to be taken up on my offer to provide you with an enhanced buffering plan.
Okay. John, would that require us to find it once again complete for like the fourth or fifth time?
No. They submitted a mighty-
That's true, yeah.
I mean, as a property matter, what would happen if they didn't do that? Is we would go through, we would find it, we would find it complete but inadequate, and then they would have to submit a price plan?
Completeness is not adequate.
Correct, yeah.
Have, we have five. So that, that's, that's where we've heard. I'm prepared to respond, and I didn't understand when you closed the public hearing, that the applicant doesn't go through its, all of the three criteria.
Right. Now-
You could leave it open.
Hold on, there, there is something. Or ordinance site plan review does say, with submission, material, "The applicant must prepare, prepare and submit a site plan review application, including the development plan and supporting documentation," that's an important point, "that meets the submission requirements set forth below. This material must be submitted to the code enforcement officer twenty-one days prior to the meeting at which the application will be considered." enforcement officer 21 days prior to the meeting at which the application will be considered. So let me ask you this, John. If, from the date of today, we're, well, if you're going to submit a new plan, it should be 21 days after we receive the submission, correct?
I think that that's for your initial review. I believe that the plans get revised as we move along in this process. And that 21 days for the initial filing. As you know, there have been repeated filings in this matter and I've shown other matters that you reviewed, where it was within seven days prior to an extended submission. So that's, I, I think you're, I think that that's for the first meeting, the application review.
Agreed with that, John?
Yeah. In the ordinance, it allows for, at this timing before, you have planned more from determining the application complete. You had 35 days?
On site plan review, 35 days, yeah. Which would be the 30th.
When we met on the statutory deadlines. So we want to schedule a meeting for 13th. I assume Mr. Baer will have that supplemental information that he has.
When do you think you could have that, Mr. Baer?
If there's much time at all. Monday?
Monday, ladies.
Okay, so. What?
The 30th, 29th.
That's the 29th, okay. And that's enough time for any response from Mr. Plagie's side, correct? Before the meeting?
Mr. Plagie did not respond until he sees what Mr. Baer proposes.
That's what I mean, but if they propose it by Monday.
That's simple. When Mr. Baer submits the enhanced buffering plan, he gives a copy to Mr. Plagie. If that's acceptable to this capability.
Now we put us, so we should set a deadline for any response. 13th, with the calendar, I can't see it, so.
So this is Monday, the 29th?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The 13th.
Okay. So, and our packets would go out the 6th, correct? Okay, so.
I will email you the enhanced buffer.
Right. So any, any further submissions, we should set a deadline of four o'clock on the 6th, correct?
Six or 17.
Do you want to have it in our packs?
Does that make sense?
I'm going to be in Connecticut on 13th.
You may be in Connecticut on 13th. We would still have, if Lawson's here.
He's going to read it. He's going to listen to this.
Yeah. Lawson also has to listen to this tape in order to participate.
I gotta be down there for work.
You know for sure?
I'm going to be in Connecticut hard for that week.
Well. I see they're discussing it. Are you happy with the 13th, or would you want to wait till Mr. Witham's also available at the following meeting?
I would like it when Mr. Witham is available. However, I'm not available from the 14th to the 29th. And I'd like Mr. Lawson to have an opportunity.
That's, okay, and the 29th, yeah, and 27th, so it wouldn't be until our first meeting in October.
Well, we've lost this season anyway, so the delay is.
It doesn't really matter.
Doesn't matter to you, okay.
Are we missing up anything? Are we, are we, is there, do we need to act by a certain date, or we've got a problem?
We, we do find completeness, okay. We find it complete, and there's a discrepancy between the land use ordinance and the site plan review, which needs to be corrected, okay? And right now it says, in the land use ordinance, wait to make a decision 30 days, within 30 days after finding the application complete, and it's 35 days in the site plan review, okay? 30 days would have been for, two days from now, and on the 30th would be 35 days. But with, unless the applicant agrees with it, we all agree to extend it, there's that also, which we've done before, and it sounds like the applicant is agreeable to extending it.
Yeah, okay.
Was it in October 11th?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Was it 11th? No, yeah. No, yeah, the 11th, yeah. So it'd be October the 11th. Does that fit everybody's schedules?
I am here.
You what?
I am here the 11th.
We're hearing nobody complaining about that date. I'll take a motion to set a findings of fact for Pointy Head on October 11th, 6 o'clock right here. So I moved. Motion is second to find, to schedule the findings of fact for Pointy Head Campground, October 11th, 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM, here at the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room, Town Office. All in favor? 3-0, okay.
That submission, seven days?
Yeah, yeah. And any submissions? So we can extend that now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The 4th. Yeah, the 4th, I guess.
Thank you.
October 4th, yeah.
Fourth for submissions, okay.
We can just reflect that in a minute. Any submissions will be, well, do you want, I mean, Dan might want to see, he might, if you make him do the vote at the same day, he.
Well, yeah, there's that, yeah, I understand. Want to do the Tuesday before? Would that be okay for everybody? Well, the landscape guy said he could do it by Monday, so they...
I don't want to speak for Dan, but I presume he wants a time to see their submission and then a couple days to respond to it, maybe?
Do you want us to do it 14 days before the 11th?
Nobody has a problem with that? Okay. So it puts us where?
September 27th.
Okay.
Right?
Yep, looks that way. 27th.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. I'll take, we should make that a motion, okay?
Yeah, the, so the applicants are due when?
The revisions due by the 27th.
27th, and then any comments are due by?
The 4th of October.
Okay. So I'll move that any revisions to the buffering plan by the applicant will be due by September 27th?
Yes.
September 27th?
Four o'clock.
At four o'clock, and any, any responses to that or further submissions will be due later than October 4th at four o'clock?
Yep. Okay. A motion is second on the table to require any revisions, a deadline four o'clock on September 27th, and any further submissions, October 4th at four o'clock. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would.
Any discussion?
Nope. I would just really encourage folks to really lay out the wetland, just really clearly kind of hit your, what your arguments are there.
Okay, that makes sense, but just take a vote first.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, 3-0. Okay. We got that, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Now, now do you want to say anything?
I already did.
Okay. Okay, gotcha. I'll, I'll take one second. Put in a plug here for the comprehensive plan process, unless you want to, Mr. Comprehensive Plan. You've done it in the past, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you mean the, for the upcoming.
Well, no, here's my point, okay? This is not the first time we've been through this. We, we all recognize there's a real conflict. The conflicts arise between the, in this zone, the business, residential business zone.
Yep.
And we currently have a comprehensive plan process underway, and anybody from the public can weigh in on that. We've had a survey. We're going to be doing some public outreach and probably do some further survey work, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I'm just encouraging everybody who's a resident of this town to participate in that process.
You know, we, we were with one consultant in Hancock County Planning. We switched to another consultant, they're great, and we are planning some public outreach, including the first forum would just kind of be a general forum, let people know kind of what we're doing, get general ideas, and then there'll be additional planned public inputs where people, you know, there'll be specific workshops, where people can provide their feedback on where we think we ought to go in terms of, you know, our land use. And everything, all sorts of things, you know, services, facilities, housing, but of course, land use is what's all near and dear to our heart here.
And for those of you who may not be aware, the comprehensive plan is something, a roadmap to the town's future in a way, and helps inform ordinance changes and things like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind me asking, who are you guys using? I have some in other towns who are not happy with it.
So. I, I quit, never mind.
Yeah, so it's actually someone outfit down towards Portland in, oh, what's it?
New Gloucester, yeah.
Gloucester, yeah. North Star Planning, and we're also, Noel Musson, who's local, is kind of working with them, and so, and, you know, that we, so right now we're just in kind of the basic data inventory chapters. It's not all that exciting, at least it isn't to me, but they're doing a good job updating it. The things you have to do in order for the state to accept it, and then you're qualified for, you know, funding and whatnot, but we are getting ready to move into a discussion that I think will get a lot of interest in how, how we're zoned, what we, how we see the future of our town, where we think, you know, business ought to be or not, or how, and how we're going to use things, and that's coming up, that's coming up, so stay tuned.
Yeah, and there probably is going to be a public meeting of some kind, beginning of October. I don't remember the exact date we decided on.
And that'll be just kind of an icebreaker, and then there'll be others in the future, you know, spring and summer, to really focus on those issues.
Okay. Question up back there.
Yeah, I think it's great we're going to have some public meetings. How will we know that? I don't want to miss this.
Well, that's a good question. We've talked about that. There will be some outreach, don't worry.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to obviously be on the public, the website, the town website, will probably do the way that we always do these things. We'll post them in the post office, they'll be posted in all the post office, obviously the town office, and, you know, every, any other way people think makes sense. Smoke signal, you know, bat signal.
And I still think there's a newspaper on this island, and I hope maybe they take some interest.
We lost interest in that newspaper when we left.
What's that?
We lost interest in the newspaper.
Thank you. I think I have some money here, I'll give you later. Anyway, okay, enough of that, okay. Moving on, CEO issues. It says none here, but John, I, I think you might have something in the works. Oh, Mr. Baer, what?
You may be excused.
Oh, you may be excused, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Good night. Thanks, folks. Thank you, guys. What's the address on Columbia Avenue?
No, 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 you know, hey, I ask those questions sometimes, just to get, I just want to, you know, sometimes the law things, I don't even believe it, just to see what happens.
It is for sale?
Or just to get, you know, get a response.
Or a house console.
No, 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 that's fine. Thanks, Dan. Thanks.
They want a, want a house as an event center.
You know where Columbia Avenue is?
It's down Bernard.
That's right. Go down Bernard Road. You know the road that goes down to the town ward, the one right before that?
Down where?
Up Harbor Marina.
Just, just, you stay where the house is down there.
Carrie and Art have a house down there. You live in Columbia Avenue, right?
That's why we're here.
I thought so, yeah.
So they want to know this before they buy.
Was it like a family? Oh, they want to know before they buy it?
What they want to do is to rent out the whole house as an event wedding. So I suspect that means people who are staying at the house may be pitching a tent. So my question is, does it require site plan review?
Yes. In my opinion.
Well, it's, it's, that's no longer a residential use, so.
People living in the house is residential.
Well, but they're not, the order.
It's a business, then.
That's not true, you know. There's that law case in Ellsworth, where there was a subdivision, and a guy bought a lot in the subdivision, and he put up a four unit apartment house, and the other people in that subdivision sued him, and then went all the way to the law court.
Wait, this is the Jordan one?
Law court said that the use of the structure is still residential.
Yeah, I, but it's a business.
But is that?
But you know what's interesting, though? Suppose they did it on Airbnb, you know, I mean, people are doing that right now.
We, Douglas's house, when we first had it.
I mean, people are doing that right now.
I have a head one on Eden Street, down past, just past, solid.
To me, it's just a rental property, and someone's, I mean, one of you would be, it's just a rental property that's for a very specific purpose. Short, it's a short term rental.
It's not a short one. This is not a short.
What zone is that in? What zone is that?
Our business.
Okay. You know, it's just, their plans are so vague at this point, it's hard to say, yeah, you know, what they really want to do there, and, you know.
So if they're going to use it as a rental specifically for events, could be confirmation, wedding, bar mitzvah. It becomes a commercial enterprise.
You know, this is the reality. There are Airbnbs right now that are being rented on a weekly basis, and people can come here and have a birthday party. Does that mean?
That's true.
Does that mean, or they can rent, rent it and do whatever, you know, whatever they want. They can have bar mitzvah, whatever.
Okay, hold on. But if this is a wedding event center, you're going to have guests coming. How about parking? How about septic issues?
Well, that's what you're getting at. We don't know what they're planning. It doesn't, I don't know what they mean by wedding event, like.
Well, I was told by the Realtor they want to rent the whole house and grounds out. So my daughter's getting married, and I'm going to rent this house.
Every week? So it's going to be a wedding every week?
Yeah.
It could be, yeah.
Every week there's a wedding?
One hopes.
Or it could be every day.
Or every day?
Twice a day. Get married in the morning, you know, rent it just for the morning, and bring it to another wedding in the afternoon?
How many acres?
One, one point something. What, how many acres is it again? It's on the back there.
One point one.
One point one. We need to know more about this, but I would, right off the cuff, I say, we got to look at it.
Not a problem?
I, I think, Art, I'll allow you to speak, or Carrie, whoever wants to speak there.
I guess what I'm thinking is that they're saying they want to rent out this house to wedding parties. But if you're, if you've got a, and it's, it's a two-bedroom house, by the way, that's what your town.
It's two-bedroom, okay.
Yeah, that's what your town does. If you want to be renting out a house on a regular basis, why would you restrict yourself to only people who want to visit with their, have a wedding? Why would you just venture to the.
Right, who, everybody? You mean like the Airbnb mod?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like there must be something more that they want to do than just occupy two bedrooms for people who are going to have.
Well, that's what I was just saying to John. Certainly they're going to have guests coming, where they're going to be using the set, the facilities. There's demand on the septic system, blah, 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 parking, you know, vehicles?
That's exactly what.
Yeah.
But we have one extra concern, which is, I have an easement for a septic system which is on that land. And I got that easement because that whole hillside is very septic, uh, sensitive to septic. On the other side of it, the house just sold for eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the people bought it sight unseen because they found in the book that they saw, and afterwards found out that the four-bed, four-bedroom house that they bought wasn't a four-bedroom house. It wasn't even a three-bedroom house. It's licensed to be a two-bedroom house, and, oh yeah, the town had decided they were going to levy fifteen hundred dollar a week, whatever, against these people because the woman had turned a garage into a dwelling. Apparently the real estate agent didn't do due diligence because she didn't tell the clients any of this. And the septic system had failed. My septic system failed on that hillside. The, Larry Clarkson told me at the time that his was failing, and that was one of the reasons that he wanted mine, which joined his, to go away, which I did. The, there was a house across the street in Parkmont, the cotton users, that was occupied by people. But that had torn down because its septic system had failed and it's, um, the Adamses are either in ongoing litigation or have been in litigation with Carlton Johnson over a septic system fund at Hillside.
Well, that's why they had to shore up the hill.
He's having to pump out something, and, uh, so I was in this situation, and I had a meeting with some of the town, and I explained that this would mean a good deal of anxiety. But luckily, that neighbor, two, two people ago, in that house, was willing to grant some of the septic system, partly because he was a nice person, and partly because in the end I paid more than I paid for my house, not for the septic system, but for the special-oriented trees that they wanted to buy, and the trees that I put here, and all the soil I brought in, and a great deal of the landscaping that you now see that makes it a beautiful property. That cost me a lot of my house. It wasn't a lot of money in those times, but it certainly was, was difficult. Eleanor, they, that person also required me to get the best lawyer in town at the time, right, at the easement. He told me who to get, he told me who to get for a soil scientist, who was Eleanor, who was the, the toughest soil scientist that I've ever had. He, he wrote it up, and in the end, he said to me, "Well, we can give you, no one on that hillside ought to have no two bedrooms." In fact, it's a beautiful home that's prepared, only it's a two-bedroom home at this point, single-family home, two bedrooms. I've had people visit me for the last forty years and say, "It's horrible what you're going to be like." "What do you mean?" "Well, you won't let her have a washing." For forty years, we've done a lot of that.
Isn't that spousal abuse?
Some people think so.
That's why you've been beating your laundry down on the rocks on the shore?
I was denying her that washing.
You know, you know, Art, men, men can do laundry too.
I've done plugging.
Okay.
In any case, we have not, we chose the option. We were given the option by God, we had two bedroom house, the little option. Or two bedroom house, the little option. And we chose the latter. Lying on my own for forty years, I don't have a garbage disposal, I don't have a water supply system, which I don't think should be, think it should be banned from the night. I don't, we have not gone to go on to that. Someone walked in while I was, you know, who said we were living like pioneers because of all the stuff we don't have, much of it having to do with plumbing. And I did that so that I could keep my house. If, if a wedding, and by the way, all of the rumors originally that I heard, and I heard it first from my friends, were that it was going to be a wedding venue. Beautiful big field, I would look at that and say, perfect for a tent, but what about the hundred thousand?
Let, let me stop you. I don't mean to interrupt here, but I don't want to get into a lot of detail here, be, with some application that we don't even have before us, so, okay, so.
I would think.
But I understand concerns and, and, you know, from, find out more, John, and, and it sounds to me like this really needs to go through site plan review.
Is the easement with the people who want to buy this house, your easement?
The easement was three people ago, and it's conveyed those two times, and everyone, people have come to me and said, "We don't really like it."
Yeah, once you have an easement, it goes with the. Yes, yeah, I know that, so, and so this easement that you have is just with these people who want to buy this house?
I go to Mia Faro, because I know Mia Faro, Mia.
Mia Faro? Well, you are well-connected.
I talked to Mia Faro, made certain she knew about the septic easement, and I'm not sure, I never talked to the person who was there. I know, but I hoped they knew when they were selling the house to someone, and they said, "We're going to have weddings here." That's what they said, and it sounds to me like all the early information is, "We were going to have weddings here." And then when they put in the application, "We're going to have, we're going to exclude it to people who are going to come with the wedding party." "Oh, but I'm looking for a field somewhere where they're actually going to have the wedding, and the only thing I see is the big field next to it."
Okay, thank you, okay. Take a motion to, oh, we need to set the next meeting date. Motion to set the next meeting for September thirteenth, six PM, low, who knew? Huh?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything?
We said after Pointy Head, we're going to be looking further into the solar thing, and maybe getting a workshop thing. Do we want to continue that at that point, or? I won't be here the thirteenth, but you guys.
Oh, that's right, you won't be here the thirteenth.
Can I, you have a passport?
I do have a passport.
So, okay. Why don't we schedule it? We can always cancel, right?
Yeah.
If, no, there's no business, so let's schedule it, like we did the last time.
I schedule it in the regular time. I moved that we schedule the next meeting, the planning work for September thirteenth at five, uh, six o'clock in the Harvey Kelly room.
Okay. Motion and second to set the date for next meeting, Sept- September thirteenth, six PM, Harvey Kelly Meeting Room, Town Office. All in favor? Unanimous, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. At what time, Beth? Eight seventeen, thank you.
So moved.
Hey, hey, second.
Oh, my second, I'm sorry.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, okay. Thanks, folks, for showing up, yeah.
You know, the Airbnbs. That, there, yeah, but the bigger question is, even, I mean, even tonight, you heard the guy, it sounds like, I've heard, I've heard it a few times now, I mean, on that Woods Road next to the campground, I think there's a lot of Airbnb going on up there already, from what I understand.